Good.
Good evening, everybody. Hello. Julie always reminded me that it's important to start on time. So we'll give it a try.
Thank you.
We'll give it a try. We have, um, first of all, it's great to see everybody. We have no. I guess we have an agenda of sorts, if you will, but this is everybody's meeting. So if you have a question, you know, raise your hand, uh, encourage conversation. Uh, we don't have to exactly, as long as we don't talk over each other's open mic, feel free to jump in. Okay. Because we do this on every agenda, I have to ask if there's any non-arranged participation at the start of the meeting and we're going to do it at the end of the meeting as part of our agenda tonight. Is there anyone that wants to speak tonight under non-arranged participation? Well, it's kind of a funny thing, just as a citizen on any topic, different than your role as a board member.
Tell us what's on your mind.
Well, normally I would ask Josh if there's anyone online, the same question. Uh, Justin, can you help me? For sure. Is everybody online raising their hand or?
I don't see any hands online, but Tom Covert from the Planning Commission is attending virtually.
Okay. So just briefly, what I'd like to do is just have everybody introduce themselves in case we don't know each other. I'm Sean Keough, I'm the mayor.
This is Merrick, I'm on the CBA.
Joseph McClellan, City Council.
And I'm all that, City Council.
Randy Wells, EDA.
Justin Brighter, City Mayor.
Michelle Aniel, Community Development Manager.
That's the vote to you.
Samuel Arts Culture.
Working for DDA.
Andy Thomas, Arts Culture Heritage.
Listen, that's arts direct.
Julie Wright, Arts Direct.
George Frost, Parks and Rec.
Georgia Frost, just appointed to Arts Culture and Heritage.
Phil Arber, Arts Culture Heritage.
Don Darnell, ZDA.
Dan Shaw, City Council.
Matt Kowalski, Planning Commission.
And you've got two people online. Becky, do you want to start, please?
Becky Murillo, Parks and Rec.
I'm Covert, Planning Commission.
Thanks for joining us, Tom and Becky. Okay, um, what we'd like to do tonight, if it's okay, is to start off by having, um, each of the five boards have somebody just kind of give a overview of what you've been working on, what's important, maybe some things you want to share either coming up or been accomplished in the past. And, um, first off is Arts Culture and Heritage. So I don't know, Cheryl, if you'll be representing or? Yeah, it could be a shared message, it could be a shared message, multiple people could talk.
I'm Cheryl, I'm the Vice Chair of the Arts Culture and Heritage Committee. Uh, what we've been working on, uh, obviously everyone's pretty much aware of, but the biggest thing is the Bicentennial Committee, uh, or Bicentennial Celebration. We have a subcommittee for the Bicentennial, so we've been working on that. Um, we have our big annual Plan Air Festival coming up in August, so we've been working busily on that. We just finished our art sculpture, um, selection, implementation. Every year we have a rotating sculpture, uh, display. We have five sculptures going in this year and, um, those should be going up in May, uh, around town. And part of one of the things we're doing for the Arts Culture, uh, portion of the Bicentennial is we are putting on a developmental reading of a new play and that play is based on Catherine Dexter McCormick. And I don't know if you all know who Catherine Dexter McCormick is, but she, um, was born here in Gordon Hall. She is the granddaughter of Judge Samuel Dexter, our founding father, and she is internationally known for, um, women's rights. Basically, she found, co-founded the League of Women Voters and she, um, is the, um, basic reason why women have the birth control pill today. Um, she remodeled the Gordon Hall for us in, uh, for the nineteen forty-one Railroad Centennial and has done all sorts of other things that I won't go into now, but I would encourage everyone to come visit that Arts Culture Heritage, um, item, on June twenty-third. We'll have that reading at the Encore Theater. Other things we're working on? Yeah, those are the major things. I think there's a.
We wanted to call everybody's attention to an upcoming Bicentennial concert this Sunday at four p.m. at Dexter High School. It will feature the Dexter Community, uh, Community Orchestra plus a, um, choir composed, we're calling, we're calling it the, uh, well, the Arbor Civic Chorus and Dexter Community Choir. And together, we're going to put on Beethoven's Ninth Symphony. So it's going to be a big event. The other thing that we're doing there is we're going to have the world premiere of a piece that was, uh, commissioned and composed specifically for the Dexter Bicentennial. Um, it's by a local composer by the name of Evan Chambers. It's called From the Woods to the Water and Home. And it is evocating of Dexter's history, especially its natural beauty. There's a lot of, um, a lot of stimulation of the woodlands, the wetlands and the river that, um, they go, went into the piece and it's going to conclude with a song that was, um, written by Evan Chambers as part of this piece that is going to be an audience sing-along. So everyone will have a chance to join in on the, the performance of this piece. Um, I think it's a, it's a really big deal to have a, um, piece permission for, um, the celebration of the city. So, um, I'm hoping that as many of you can, that you can attend will do so and that you'll help me get the word out. I have, um, some posters over there at the end of the table if you would like to take one.
I'm down, what I, welcome.
I'm sorry. And it was at Dexter High School in the, so, for March, uh, or more. I'm sorry.
I don't need to learn, oh, but I made a team. We were also, we did find a tiny capsule last week from the citizens in the end room. We will be digging that up and seeing what was the past there fifty years ago. And people can bring things to the next fifty years. So sort of an exciting event, especially for bio. I, I guess I will add one more thing. And that is, uh, for Arbor Day and Earth Day, just this last week, the Arts Culture and Heritage Committee and Association of Bicentennial Committee and the City of Dexter, um, planted a commemorative oak tree in Monument Park. And so that oak tree will be there with a plaque that we will dedicate in June, uh, for hundreds of years to come and hopefully will represent, um, this year in our history of Dexter. That's it.
Other thoughts from that group? Okay, we'll let, we'll keep going with the other groups and then, um, we'll come back to general comments. Next up is, uh, DDA. Don, would you like to, uh, provide an update as the Vice Chair there, buddy?
Sure, yeah. Uh, Doug Finn chose a fine night to ditch on me. So, um, I think two big things that the DDA is working on, one is the, uh, three zero four five three, uh, project. Or maybe it's not a project. So as a lot of people know, we were engaged for over a year with, uh, a company called Common Sale. And, uh, they had some contingencies. Uh, they couldn't, uh, they couldn't work out. And so they, they left the, uh, left the project a couple of months ago. Um, but fortunately, uh, they were backfilled by a company called, is it Trowbridge, Michelle?
Yes, Trowbridge.
Trowbridge is, uh, we don't have a, an agreement, but we have, uh, some interest with a company, uh, called Trowbridge. And they seem to be legit. They um, have done some pretty, uh, big projects and very similar projects. And, uh, it's very preliminary, but, uh, you know, it's, it's not nothing. Uh, the other thing that, um, that we're working on is our strategic plan. And, um, that's in committee, uh, the DDA, I mean, all of the DDA participates on, uh, you know, projects that we'd like to see get done. Um, and, uh, I think those are the highlights. Um, our treasurer is here. He might have something to share about our bond status or something like that.
No, but I will say that, uh, you saw, I've been on DDA for eight years now, this is my eighth year, and, uh, we have grown almost threefold in these, uh, in these eight years. So, uh, we've got the resources to really make a difference in town. Um, and, uh, I really think that we, we intend to and, and are on that path, so.
When you say threefold, what is it that's growing three times?
Revenue.
Well, revenue.
Yeah, so, yeah, we've, uh, grown from approximately a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar, uh, DDA to, uh, our estimates are, are, are over eight hundred thousand a year.
What's lurking in the future?
What's lurking?
Yes, you have some things in the back of your mind that you'd like to address that you haven't done so, so far.
Well, one, one thing that's coming up, help me with the date, June eleventh, is it?
June eleventh.
June eleventh is another public forum to gather input from citizens related to what Don mentioned as item one, the thirty forty-five Broad Project. Some of you will recall that back in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, uh, Norfolk Homes went through a series of charrettes to get public input over into what do people want to see on that property? And, um, so we're, we're going to do it again to see if that, some of the sentiment that was heard years ago still holds. What we heard before was, uh, housing is good. Uh, we heard that condos are preferred over rental. We heard that people don't want the biggest thing. The, the view, the view from the park is important. Those are just a few things. Um, but it's been over five years and, um, there's been new development interest and, um, anyway, DDA's thought it's important to, and council, to get ahead of some of these questions and get people back out and invite them to comment on, on things, so. I don't remember what time, is that at six o'clock or seven o'clock meeting?
It's at seven o'clock and it's similar in, um, intent. Um, it's the, it's predicated on the Housing Readiness Grant that we got, that the Planning Commission is working on. So it's an amendment to the master plan specifically to consider housing and the thirty forty-five Broad Street Project, which is the DDA's number one project. Um, the, is, um, it crosses lines for different boards and commissions. Comes at a really good time and we're looking forward to the public input.
It's amazing to think that we're coming up on ten years since we knocked the buildings down and how patient the community has been over a sea of concrete.
Well. It's the view that people like.
The ca, the concrete?
No.
Um, but the, the strategic plan is another thing that is, uh, open for input. Um, there will be some public opportunity to comment on, uh, infrastructures, improvements or projects that the DDA has to list. By law, we have to have a strategic plan every so often so we can, um, you know, plan how to spend the money, the revenue that Mike said is increasing as the taxable value increases within the district. There has to be a plan on which to spend that money and that gets developed through a public process. So if you have ideas or things you think are in need of, uh, improvement, we encourage you to come out and read the plan, comment on what might be missing.
Not a long time since I was in DDA, but the question of revenue is critical to what you can do in the area of bond management, the acceleration of payoffs. Is that a feasibility so that we can return some of that increased tax base to the coffers of the city?
Yeah, we've got a sinking plot right now, but they are a big chunk of it. And it's common, actually. So we haven't decided what we can do about, but, but we've got a positive.
Most of the, I think we have two large outstanding bond issuances and both of them end, I believe, by the twenty thirty-one or twenty thirty-two. About one point six million in debt, I think, total, for the, thereabouts.
Five minutes, uh, less than three and a half percent.
Yeah, you don't want, yeah, good money.
Yeah, that's, that's the challenge in trying to figure out whether to want to pay it off early because you're going to ramp into something much, two and a half times more than that anyway.
Got something coming, yeah.
Would you want to explain how the DDA has been increasing the amount of contribution that it gives to the city to cover things like maintenance and administration and those costs?
Yeah, what the current, the current proposed budget for the next fiscal year has, what, a hundred and three thousand, is it? I think that's planned to come back to the city for downtown maintenance of the downtown. And that's been, that's been worked up from ten thousand, five or six years ago. So if, if significantly increase that and, um, there's been talk that in the future, some of that money could even go to offset the cost of police and or fire as those two, uh, increase as well.
Within the district.
Within the district, yeah. But there's nothing against the DDA Act that prevents that, so it's on the table, but current year's budget is the, the money towards the downtown development maintenance. Laura's our newest member of DDA. Laura, she's over down there, right? She just, uh, had her first meeting this past month. Okay, let's jump over to Parks and Rec. Sure.
The question, uh, originally, now a few years back, probably in twenty eighteen, like you said, those two houses on Forest Street were part of that development. Are those two houses still going to be part of that? Who should I ask?
The houses that are up Forest Street that are still there?
Yes.
They're not currently part of it.
Thank you.
Just the two vacant.
Still privately owned.
Just the two vacant parcels are part of, there's five parcels. Um, eighty seventy-seven, eighty eighty-seven Forest Street. Those are former residential. Those houses were knocked down. It's now a temporary gravel lot. You've got eighty ninety grand, which is adjacent to Mr. Darnell's building. And then you've got thirty forty-five Broad Street and the former substation postage stamp.
Thank you. So those two houses that I'm thinking of are not part of that.
Julie, when, when Norfolk, when Norfolk was interested, they had talked to both property owners and we had heard that there were some contingent offers potentially, but they all expired or went away when they're interested in the other base property went away.
Thank you. And the second thing, I'd like to comment because thirty forty-five Broad Street sits right on the park, right next to the park property. Parks and Recs would definitely like to be involved in a conversation of what happens there.
One of the things that, if I could, that Parks and Rec might be, um, interested to know, when the DDA purchased thirty forty-five Broad Street? And that was at around the same time that the city was improving Mill Creek. Um, in order to be able to get that pathway, um, that goes across the front, the DDA has granted an easement uh, along the frontage. So, um, the, the pathway actually sits outside of that area, outside of the property, but then you also have this easement area. So any development will actually be pushed back even farther than the property line, so.
Directly next to the car property. Well, yes, adjacent.
Adjacent to, but not directly on, yes.
So Parks and Recs would definitely like to be part of that discussion when it comes up.
I think that's a great, a great comment, Julie, because, um, there's a lot going on in that area. The, the county is planning on bringing the trail across the Mill Creek in twenty twenty-five, right, Justin?
Uh, so, uh, late, late twenty-five.
And I think most of you have heard that the, what is it, Bell Road Bridge is going to be used. And then the, the thought after that connection comes in is that, you know, the, the importance of the trailhead there at the end of Grand Street and the vision for that trailhead is something that needs to be a community voice to get to, if you will. Um, the county has volunteered to draw up sort of some talking renderings to get of, of what they would envision having there if, if they were leading it. And, uh, I think they want to participate a little bit in that, uh, financially and, you know, as part of their border-to-border trail idea, so. Um, once we get those illustrations or whatever they end up doing, we're going to share them as well so we can get input on that as well. But my, my thought is we'll make a mess, bring the trail in first and then work our way out. Hopefully that times out well with the thirty forty-five Broad Project. Catherine?
So if they, if they do that, if we're going to talk like, uh, Dexter, Anaxi, some part of the other side of the creek and, you know, so that we can, so people would have anything there.
They haven't talked about Anaxi or anything over there.
That's, uh, isn't it?
Corrected, so, yeah, yep, yes.
Um, we, we, we do own property on the other side of the creek, but it ends where the, the hill begins to slope. And so the, the Legion, the KFC, all of those are outside of the, the city boundaries and are in Siota Township.
I think that's logical property that could in the future be annexed in. But it's not like the Legion's looking to do that or, or sites are, have not been approached over there. The closest property, uh, was the one that, where the Pelham Project is proposed to.
Does the DDA involve itself financially in anything to do with the border-to-border thing? The offloading bike and pedestrian traffic off the roadways with the addition of the Bell Road Bridge?
The DDA hasn't gotten involved in that. To say they did contribute some money to help the city put that extra connector in that's going to come through Grand View.
Okay.
There was a small contribution made towards the city's component of that.
At the end of.
At the end of it, that's, yeah. We got to figure out how to get that open, but it's in anyway. Our part's done.
There's still need for some.
Julie, I will say, you know, we, um, answer your, uh, concern or, or wanting to be part of it is this morning when we had our conversation with the, the new, um, for the most recent, uh, interest in developing it. I mean, that was probably the number two thing is to protect that, that, uh, trailhead. Um, so everybody in the DDA is also, you know.
I could add, you're, the June eleventh meeting, the, some of the input we're hoping to get as it pertains to thirty forty-five Broad Street would be how do people envision that trailhead at the end of Grand Street? Right there where the trail and the new, um, pathway is going to come through. So we're hoping to get public input on that as well.
Well, and then one of the other things that's come up with DDA, um, uh, Christie Lauer, actually, is the one that I think has promoted it a little bit, give her credit. Is that if it's going to take a while to figure out what goes on at thirty forty-five Broad, we should try to get sidewalks down Broad because there's a lot of activity from Forest to Grand. And right now, when you're either in the street or you're in a very unpaved, non-pedestrian area and, uh, so there has been some thought behind adding that project in as a discussion.
This is just out of not knowing, so I'm just going to ask, does the DDA get involved with, um, the downtown building owners for, um, all of our businesses down there to try to work with the business owner or the building owners, I should say, not the business owners? The building owners to try to make sure that maybe on that street level, we retain retail, um, businesses in there so that the downtown area doesn't get taken over by non-retail and we have no reason for people to come here. Is there any, is that something they would be involved in?
Don, you want to hit that one? No, no, we, we'll have Michelle help us.
In a word, uh, no.
You don't get involved in it or it's not something you're interested in or it's?
No, I, well, some of, no, it's not. Property owners are on the DDA, like for example, Randy's a property.
And, excuse me, what building do you own?
I own the, uh, former office, though, for many, many years.
Okay.
Lakers store and moving factory or something. I own one across the street that I'm proud to say, uh, has been purchased and paid off one hundred percent. So
The answer is.
We got a little over there in the dance studio, wonderful folks, I might add. I sold a couple others over, uh, after the barber shop. I've been very happy with, uh, the acquisition of all of them because they've all been full nearly every minute that I own this. I'm getting old and trying to go out a little bit.
So I don't remember, uh, Cheryl asked a very, um, a very good question, um, uh, and whether the DDA participates or not. So the DDA can't tell a property owner what they can do with their property. Um, we do try to engage and stay up to date with the different business owners and property owners. But the zoning is what dictates what somebody can do with their property. But it can't go as far as saying, okay, you can't have more than one gas station here or a bank over here. It, the market, I, does that. So the best thing I can tell you to understand, if you want retail on the first floor and offices and, and non-retail above or off Main Street, embrace density because the more foot traffic you have, the more people you have that can shop and support those businesses, the more you'll have retail.
I'm sure you can say anything. Because if you don't have the shops there and the people, the traffic to visit, you're having good, good foot traffic.
Well, but foot traffic, when I say foot traffic, I'm talking about people living in downtown. So the different places that are, that are coming in currently to develop for residential are thirty forty-five Broad Street Project eventually, um, uh, uh, Grand View, um, Mike Penn's project, uh, Mill, Mill Creek, uh, flats. Those are all going to be, bring people to live in the downtown. That brings a little bit of change and it makes people uncomfortable. But those people will be, are going to be more likely to walk into town and get in their car and drive. And that foot traffic will ultimately support the businesses.
I think the DDA does support businesses that way. For example, uh, we pay for those barricades, you know, up and down Main Street so that the retail businesses or restaurants can use that.
I was thinking more along the lines of, of any kind of partnership. I've seen so many cities around this area uh, in Southern Michigan, put it that way, that have really gone from being, uh, not a destination place to a destination place because they have really invested in their downtown and they have the retail on the first story, uh, of their, you know, downtown. And they've done partnerships with the building owners, um, you know, subsidies, subsidies and different things that, that they've gotten involved with. And I know, I don't know half of what they've done, um, so I can't really speak to that, but I see it happening all around Southern Michigan. And so I just look at Dexter and just wanted to ask that same question is, is, is there anything we can do? Or is it the role of whom to try to ensure that our downtown becomes and stays a destination?
Please, that, that, uh, when we, when we close off the parking and have, you know, the, the space for the restaurants and stuff, that's huge. People love that. They come to Dexter for that.
I hate, personally, I don't like the truck lot because it's tough. You know, standing out there, yeah, it is really good, it's very.
And I, I have something else to say on the topic, uh, Alpine Street and the truck loading situation. Who would the DDA get involved with that? There's trucks parked in front of Sarah's Barber Shop. Every day, six, seven, eight trucks come park there. Um, I have to go into the street with my wheelchair. The truck drivers are really apologetic that they got nowhere else to go. Um, is there some consideration in making some changes to the street tape there to give those trucks? Um, is there some consideration of making some changes to the street tape there to give those trucks a loading zone? Maybe it's part of the fire station project?
So, current designs um, do have um, taking some parking. On the Riverview side of um, of, of Alpine. And ta- taking those and making them uh, truck loading. And then having parking on the opposite side, on the fire station side, so we're replacing, basically, what are two spots with loading. And then, I think, ten or so spots on, on, on the opposite side. And, 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 and there is plan to, um, if, assuming the plans come to fruition, um, add handicaps parking on the outside.
Parking blocks between the sidewalk and the, the parking uh, just next door to Sarah's where there's those handicapped spots there. You know, because it's, it's barrier free there, which is great, but then um, people pull up and park with their car touching the signs as handicapped parking. Right up on the sidewalk, towards the other end of the street.
All good comments. Phil?
In the area of downtown improvement, there was a move of foot or conversation had regarding to historic district claim. For the downtown area. And as the two hundredth anniversary, it would be the time to resurrect that thought and see what we think about the merchants and the business owners. And the property owners think about. Establishing a zone where the. Where the development of the facades. Uh, is uniform won't work because of structures and height, all that stuff, but the, the notion of appearance. And uh, some of the benefits that come with. Uh, and utilizing the historic district for the property owners. Maybe worth thinking about, I just don't know where they are now, I've not heard much about in the last few years, but there was conversation had. Ten fifteen years ago about it, I don't know if it's past its time or not.
Well, just to stick my neck out there, I, I think, I think it's an unnecessary level or layer. In the whole development process. I have a little bit of experience in other communities and. Some people might say it's hard enough to get through our own. Two level board of planning and council. When you throw on a historic district idea, the concept is probably favored by all, they want to preserve and protect them. But it doesn't make it easy. And may- maybe, maybe that's the point, maybe that's the point. But it can, can add a challenge.
But it does come with some state and federal compensation with that.
Potentially, yeah, potentially. I think the DDA does have one of its. Projects listed to help with facade adjustments, haven't we been carrying that as a CIP item?
It's a CIP item, it's in your current strategic plan. Facade improvements is something the, the DDA can do as part of a, um, not a grant, but as a loan program. It can be a no interest loan program. But that is something that they can do.
It's never been tapped, I don't think that. It's the only opportunity I'm aware of. We can get more information and share it.
Matt could probably talk a little bit from the planning commission's perspective, the update to the zoning ordinance that was adopted. Uh, about a year ago now, um, has a form based code. And the central business district, which the historic buildings that you're talking about are located. The, the regulations are based on forms that are currently along.
So you don't get drastic change, is what you're saying.
Although it doesn't necessarily cover the, I think where you're getting to as well as all the aesthetics, like the finer details. As well as that, I mean, it doesn't necessarily cover that.
Right.
I mean, like, you notice the finer historical accents on some of the buildings, i- it doesn't, you know, form based code, a form based code will not cover that. Um, I think I've grappled with a historic district here and there, and I think it's a really tricky, it, it sounds good, but it requires. It requires more staffing, requires a big initial investment in inventorying and things, I, I don't know, it's, this is, I mean, it is a. A much larger layer of complexity added on to things, there's benefits and there's. Um, drawbacks to it, but um, I haven't heard the conversation really pursued much more. Um, lately, I think, um, the form based codes should help, I think we've been fortunate so far in the, in the city here that we've. We've had, we haven't had anybody go after truly historic, really unique properties to tear them down. So I think we have limited tools to protect that when that, when that comes, if and when that situation ever comes up, but I think. We've taken big steps through our form based zoning and I think other items that we have within our code, but. Um, a historic district is really that next level up to kind of preserve exactly, I think, what you see, the pictures down even. Some you can control even colors and accent materials, but again, that gets to be kind of a slippery slope, slope as well, it's another board to man. It's a, or woman, whatever, it's another, uh, so it's a little bit of an investment, but I haven't heard anything more of it discussed in many years.
I'm gonna have, have Michelle give me a, a classic form based zoning.
It's, it's, it was a fun, fun project.
All right, let's jump over to the Parks Commission a little bit, let's hear from some of our Parks members.
Yes, Becky's still online.
Becky, are you there to find an update?
Sorry, Becky, you unmuted as I hit the button to ask you to unmute.
I am here, if Ju- Julie could do the update, that would be awesome, because I'm in and out of. Picking up kids and driving through, in stuff like that, so I have you on in the background.
Okay, let me pull up what to. The first thing we want to talk about is Milk Creek Park Door, you know, we've been focusing on. Expanding that park, bringing in additional playground equipment for the children and picnic areas and, and I believe we're. Applying for a grant for that. Um, so, do we know where we're at as far as the grant?
Uh, it's been submitted, uh, we, we got initial uh, feedback from uh, the state. Uh, saying maybe a little more information, uh, that all the stations have submitted, so it's all in. Depending on what's uh, or review and, and store, and bring us against all the other communities that submitted applications.
And how much would the grant cost in the number?
Do you submit for four hundred thousand?
But then I believe the city also has some funds allocated to the Parks Mission for this project as well, two hundred thousand.
So uh, we're, we're getting pushed out, uh, and the plan is to, is, is to include the funds that is coming this year. The following fiscal year, uh, this will profit.
But we certainly have reserves, Julie, for when that opportunity comes up.
Okay, now we talked a little bit about the Bell Road Bridge, that has already been brought up and that's in the process of. The county parks and racks, we know when, that's twenty twenty five?
Yeah, so I, I, they're building and targeting uh, late spring, early summer, uh, start construction. Uh, they're still finishing engineering and uh, state permitting, since they're uh, going across the map. They have to apply certain state uh, permits or the.
And I believe it's my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, uh, once we cross the creek. We're gonna be going to the, I'm gonna say left, but I think that's our understanding. Um, now we're having a, a easement between, is it between the KFC and Haley?
So the, the, that will be uh, the team, the county has uh, the resident property owners, whoever they need it to increase about that. Uh, from through the front.
But we haven't secured that area.
Uh, a- as far as I know, that, that they've had those conversations, but I don't think they have anything to sign off.
H, HWPI and um, County Parks are in discussions with Haley right now. I'm pretty sure Haley has agreed to an easement, they were just still working on feasibility studies to make sure that that was the best route. Because once they get through that property, they also have to cross the road.
Then they will connect to the, to fail this, wanting to catch and crash.
Yes, at the, so they're gonna cross the road somewhere about the middle of. The ro- the section between Parker and uh, Main Street. The crossing will be in the middle of that section and it will go um, up to the preserve and continue on.
Then the last thing we talked about in our last meeting, we had a very healthy discussion about the Parks and Recs Commission getting more involved in our community activity. Perhaps uh, partnering with another uh, group, perhaps a ACH committee and. Now having something to involve the communities, such as, one of the examples that got brought up was, we're gonna have a binding cheese party, not with them. But it was just a concept, not an idea, but we'd like to get more involved and support giving the community the. Come visit the parks, thank you, yeah. Anything else, Becky, that you?
I think that's most of it, we have been working on um, assess- uh, accessibility in each of our parks. And so little by little, we're sort of chipping away at that each year. Um, making them a little more universally accessible.
Is our park system focused on? Passive activities or? Active, active team activities? I think the school does a good job of providing a location for active team activities, but I'm not. I, I don't know what the focus is for the parks and.
I think I almost get more people into his route parks.
Providing.
There's nothing discussion about the community, the law courts. Moves for escape or first aid or.
There's a skate park.
Yes.
That's true.
It has been discussed.
Yeah, so, so, so a couple of years ago, um, somebody came with a proposal to um, split the um, community park. Basketball court um, in, and offer pickleball there, but once the schools implemented their pickleball courts. That kind of fell to the wayside, it was no priority.
Zach, Zach, Zach's got some comments.
Uh, has the opinion started about the other entities aside from the ball, um, like dog art or? Splash pad, those types of things, is there any discussion?
In term. In terms of dog park, that has been brought to us a couple times, act- a few people, um, citizens from town have actually. Presented to parks on that, but in all of our community um, public input. Sessions or. Surveys that we've put out, um. The interest from the general public for a dog park has not been significant. And the splash pad, although some of us are pretty big um, advocates of a splash pad. It is also ranked pretty low on the um. Um, survey responses.
Yes, I think um, Jamie. Trying to come up with something. Remembered it with Black or signed something for the parks.
Is this in addition to the piece of art that's behind the library, indoor? Something north park?
The library, I think, put in that one down below the library.
Yeah, on the lower lows.
And now memory of Pat, yes, she's had on the library board for so many years.
Yes, that was Pat's family.
I think we're looking at something more for the entire trail to pass.
And you're thinking directly of Paul and escape teams.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, he's, he was ins- instrumental in that effort.
Absolutely. And one other thing we are really focused on is uh, putting lighting under the Main Street bridge, I mean, there's. I watched those runners on Monday night coming from the Anna Runnin Club. And it's not bad in summertime, it's daylight until ten o'clock, and in the winter, it's quite dark down there. And I've walked under that bridge a number of times at night and it's very, very dark. And then when the water is high, very slippery. We have approached council asking of, on light, lighting under the bridge.
Are, you're getting estimates on that, right?
Yeah, it, it's more of a.
How about the topic of uh? Let me draw Dan in here, public bathrooms.
Yes, please.
One idea that we've, that we've talked about has been converting the old Hotel Hickman into public restrooms. Since it's adjacent to Monument Park where we do a lot of activities, I'll jump in here, please.
I'm thinking about that, I said this out loud, I mean, why not do it better, yes. I know we have talked about that as restrooms, but I was thinking more about it, and if we made it into like a community center. It's not staffed, but then it's got like, you know, publications in the front, maybe some art. And then the bathrooms, so it's not just like, here's a bathroom, you know, in the middle of downtown. Something I've been thinking about.
What, what do people think of that idea?
Can I add to that idea?
Please, yeah, take, jump in.
The, one of the reasons I came up with this idea is the other places like thirty forty four Broad, forty five Broad. That needs a lift station there, it's gonna need a lift station if I'm not correct with whatever they build there, there is no store there. And it's a long ways away. The same for the Dexter Farty Department, we're gonna have to put in a really expensive lift station to lift that wastewater to get it to Alpine Street. And then Hickman's is a perfect, I think is a really good location with Dexter Days and all the stuff that we do downtown. It would be nice to have a designated bathroom instead of porta potties.
I would say being business owners right there to hire, we get a little. Restrooms as well as, as you said, the information on Dexter and. Or maybe like something along from the Historical Society, information on where that museum is and.
So, um, in, in, in talking with Cunningham Lim, um, uh, Sam Ashley, um. Believes that there's likely room if you wanted to do uh, public restrooms in the back and then still rent out the front. Or, or something like that, that, that's also a possibility.
Which part of that? One attached to, like to be here in camera or the little building, usually the library?
The little building, the little building is for the library.
One other, I think Hotel Hickman is a wonderful location for downtown bathrooms. Um, one of the discussions that has come up at County Parks as well as HWPI. Is the potential of. Exploring adding um, public bathrooms to the trailhead at, to the Grand Street Trailhead. As well. So I would just like to put that out there to everyone other than parks.
We've heard that. Okay.
So when you say public lights, I automatically think of things like the decorative light poles. That's not what you're talking about. It would be, it would. It would be shielded and downward facing so that it illuminates, but isn't, isn't. Growing light just. Out randomly. I'm sorry. So the. The ordinance has. Limits light intensities foot candles at property lines. It doesn't really talk about public lighting, but we would use the ordinance as a standard. And so you'd have shielded fixtures downward facing and I suspect that. For public lighting under the bridge, there's going to be sensors so that it goes on when it's dark and is off when it's not. But being under the bridge where you don't get direct sunlight, that might be a challenge, so if somebody who's an electrical engineer. I'm sure Justin will be. That's another.
Okay, Mac, wanna give an update on the planning commission?
Yay, please.
Yes.
Or you can delegate someone to do it.
The most exciting board by far. Sorry, didn't have anything prepared, so Michelle gave me some notes I gotta kind of read off my phone. I think everybody's aware of what planning commission does in general, but basically some of our, really our three kind of overall topics we deal with with master plan. The zoning ordinances and then as well as obviously site plan and development review. So those kind of like our three main areas that we usually touch on. And I had asked a question, I think it was two thousand nineteen, the last time we all got together. Was that correct, Justin? I think somebody said two thousand nineteen, is that? Wow. Okay, well, I don't remember everything up to two thousand nineteen, so I'll just kind of cover some highlights of the last year, but. Actually, we could go all the way back to the beginning. Right, all right, we'll start with the year for now. So basically, as I said, really the zoning ordinance, we had a number of. Basically, a staff brings to us over time throughout the year, there's various zoning amendments that we might need to tweak. In some cases, it was. Kind of grammatic, not grammatical errors, what I want to say, like kind of just clarifying errors and things like that that we clarified within the zoning ordinance. There's other items that we've done. So, or some of the other, well, of course, the big farm day zoning that we mentioned, that was a couple of years ago that we, that we went through that process. Are there some other zoning amendments that we've worked on? Well, yeah, consistency of language as well, because anytime you update, even though we did update the, the majority of the code with the foreign base code, there's a lot of different elements. That lead into everything that we do, so there's sometimes ripple effects of code, we think we changed and there's something over here that we identify later on. I know there are some other items that we had specified, some, something that had come to planning commission that we thought maybe could have been handled at a staff level. At our most recent meeting, so I was, I think we're always looking for things like that. It's kind of like a value added. I mean, some of these, if, if it's a decision that staff can make, and I think it doesn't end up changing the nature of what planning commission or council would have. Or did approve ultimately, there's ways to revise the code, I think, to allow Michelle to. Pick some of those issues without having to go to the planning commission and the council for something that's really just a clarifying error in some cases. So let me look, go back to my notes here.
You updated your PUD ordinance.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Clarity on process.
That was a big one, yes. So the PUD ordinance is everybody's kind of familiar, we've seen quite a few PUDs over the past couple of years. Most probably controversially was the, the Pelham project, I think, which are you kind of familiar with? And I'm jumping around a little bit, but as far as development review, that's probably one of the, the largest projects that we dealt with as a commission within the last year, I think. And I think overall as a commission, I think we, we really function good in that. I don't think we ever have any. I would never consider us like a rubber stamp to anything, I think, like each one of us on the board bring different areas of expertise and, and. And we, it, it's interesting, I noticed in some of our votes too, it's, it's never, sometimes you have people that disagree on one vote, maybe agree on the other votes, things like that. So I think the Pelham was a good highlight for that kind of discussions, I think, in our deliberations where that was a, obviously a very prominent project. For a lot of people in many ways, and I think that we as a commission, we saw it a couple of times and we went back and forth, there's a lot of public interest in that project. But I think overall, as a project that I think really was improved throughout the planning process. With planning commission input as well as ultimately council and some of the residents, I know. Going through, so that was a big one, as well as the Mill Creek Flats, that one, hopefully that we're gonna get that one constructed in the next couple of years or so. We authorized another, we authorized an extension for that plan as well. Kentwood Place, which is a PUD that was on Baker. Near, near Main Street there, kind of, I think that will be coming back to us in a couple of months with some revised plans for that. That was, what did we say, fifteen seventeen houses, I think approximately, or townhomes, kind of. And that, so that was another one that will be coming, as I said, in a couple of months or so. Special land uses, there's things like, I think sometimes people don't really. Oh, yeah, Millennium Place, that's right. We actually had approved a couple of years back, or a while, about four or five years ago. So we just reauthorized that with an extension as well. Site plans are good for, how, how, two years, okay. Two years, and then we can reauthorize them after that. So like, again, with this one of the Mill Creek Flats as well as. The Millennium Place, basically, which is also kind of across the street from there, so both of these are on Grand, interestingly enough. Across the street from Grand View Commons, which I'm sure everybody knows is, is humming along very nicely towards development every, when they're building the townhomes, they're putting another linkage of sidewalk in slowly but surely. I had the question about when we were gonna finish that link, because I know it's stubbed into the development there and, and gotta get the developer to kind of work on that other, that other end of it. But those projects on Grand Street, I think, are really exciting, because obviously there's. So much activity, I think, going on there, and, and one of them, somebody brought up the idea about, yeah, helping businesses and stuff and increasing. You know, how do we help businesses along Main Street as well as in the downtown? And I think what we've got going on, in particularly in Grand Street there with. And, and Don's building there, just to highlight that one, basically, like the little micro businesses that we've got going on as well as in down where the. The High Line isn't all that, those are super exciting projects that twenty years ago, I don't think people would have considered launching those kind of businesses within the city of Dexter. Because we didn't have the density, we didn't have the draws that we do now, and I think those, that's exactly the type of businesses that we want to foster. But in order to keep those in there, we need to get people, we need to get people that are easily accessible to, you know, down there as well as driving, but also just biking. So that goes off on my biking tangent to a non-motorized transit. I knew that we were connect, I didn't know that that was actually as much of a done deal as it is the connection across from Grand. Over to Dexter Chelsea, I mean, that's just, that's huge. And I think as far as making Dexter a city that is a destination for everyone in Southeast Michigan, I mean, it's incredible. All these trails stubbed directly into Dexter, I mean, with the Iron Bell Trail, I think everybody kind of knows what the Iron Bell Trail is, right? So that's basically gonna go, we'll be able to hop on that pretty much from Dexter and drive to Iron Mountain and UP eventually. I mean, that, that's incredible. So I think all of that though highlights some other issues and challenges, I think that we're gonna come across, like, again, with the trail down Dexter Chelsea. And with the Pelham project, if that goes through with the extension of that water main. One of the issues we have on our agenda coming up, the master plan, a master plan amendment, we have the Mishtr grant that we got, which is really exciting to. Re, to, basically amend our master plan to look at that again, so that's a really exciting thing, again, master plan, that's the guy. Our goals, guides for everything that we want to do, planning wise in the city. And basically, so I think that that's a really exciting process, but one of those, one of the things that have come up, I think, with some of these recent projects is with that extension, if that water main goes across. Or goes underneath the river there, that's really gonna, I mean, those properties on that side of the river, if that trail's going through there with that bridge. From, from, I'd say from Haley Mechanical to, to Main Street. There is gonna be a lot of interest in those properties, so I think that that's something that I wanted to highlight within the master plan. And really for all of us, because this concerns the DDA, concerns planning, council, obviously, parks and erect, are in everybody, and I think. That there's gonna be a tremendous amount of pressure on those properties, I think, and as we've identified through the various projects, particularly the Pelham, the creek shed's very important to a lot of people. So I think the sooner we get ahead of some of those issues, identifying that these, these conflict points along Dexter. You know, well, really around the city edge in particular, but around Dexter Chelsea Road there with this trail coming in, I think the sooner we get to that, the better. So hopefully with our master plan amendment, we're gonna touch on a little bit of that and exploring some of those areas there. Sidewalk connections, I know, are, are huge all over the city. I'm a big walker and biker, so. Basically, I, I'm always looking for ways to improve our connectivity, I think, and. I'm trying to look serious, see if there's anything else that we wanted to touch as a highlight.
So there's not much going on?
No, no, not a lot. Between this and Ann Arbor, there's a lot going on, but let's see. So we already kind of mentioned the work session for thirty forty five Broad Street, June eleventh, so that, again, concerns really all of us here, I think. And then the Mishra Housing Grant, we covered that. So I think that's, that's kind of, I'm trying to think if there's anything else from planning commission, we have Allison here, did, did I miss anything? And Tom Covert's online, I believe, Wa is also on planning commission as our council liaison. And I think if there's.
Michelle, is there a, is there another forum related to the Second Street corridor?
There will be later this year, but one hasn't been scheduled yet.
Yes, okay. Yeah, yeah, exactly. So the Second Street corridor, there's gonna be a kind of a little mini forum on that, basically, because that's. Is we, when we were going through some of the zoning ordinance and the revisions, and that was kind of a, and we've had a, we had a project that a couple of years ago or so. That kind of touched a nerve in a lot of areas that we're really thinking is, so Second Street is really a. It's really an interesting street where it has residential and really a mix of interesting quasi-industrial type uses with some, you know, the park tucked back there. That nobody knows exists really, so it, it's really an interesting, so we didn't, so kind of at the planning commission, we pointed on it a little bit at that time. Because we thought that it required a little bit more study, because it's, it is such an interesting area, and I don't know whether, and we didn't really have any. Any kind of real direction at planning commission as, as a board to like where we wanted to go with that. So I think we're gonna spend a little bit more time looking into that, hearing out the residents and getting feedback, feedback from all of you guys and, and. Trying to develop a plan for that area as well, to see how, again, basically is, that'll be another area, I mean, we're gonna see, I think, so much pressure in different areas of, of the city now. Because of, you know, all, all the great things that we're doing, you know, we're a victim of our own success in some ways, so I think that that's a good thing, but. It, it'll be interesting to see what comes out of that study. So, yeah, that was an area that we, you know, how will the land uses evolve on that street? I don't know, that's a really good one. Other question?
Is that the street where the DTE substation has been enlarged or? For the, something from the one that was on the Deco property? Thirty forty five.
Right, it hasn't been, it was upgraded, but it wasn't enlarged, it's still the same size it was before. And as it goes forward, and Sean can help me if I stumble. As DT, as the technology improves, that equipment that comes into the substation actually gets smaller.
That's what they tell us anyway.
I've seen it.
The poles get taller.
But I have seen it happen, because there's a small substation by where I live, and they had all these big poles and these big, huge boxes. Came down to small holes and small little boxes, so.
Well, just on the topic of electricity, one of the projects that we're listing in the DDA plan. Is the ability to help participate in potentially varying lines. When we have power outages, we have a lot of people that are regularly out of power, and it's the same circuits. And we have varied utility lines in the past, along, many may recall, we had them along Jeffords, right in front of the park, there are all sorts. Yeah, so, but that's a, that's gonna.
That's twenty years old, so.
It'll be a potential eligible project, is what I'm trying to say, not that we're gonna start doing it day after day, but.
No, but we actually do have a meeting with DTE tomorrow to talk about potentially varying lines along Alpine and. Behind the Main Street buildings as part of the fire station discussion, so probably encompass more than just. What we're gonna need for the fire station, but it's something we'll be able to take back to the DDA for next meeting.
They build extra, extra questions.
It comes from somewhere.
Which brings, makes it a good time to. Work the extra angle for improving the bomb. Yes, same generator, that's true.
I can project. Oh, okay. My information members don't need to answer this now, but there are a lot of resources. Resources for training and. We have nothing for plot plans. So instead, staff has had to bodge together and borrow standards from site plans. And it can be very, much more than what you need to do for a plot plan. And it's a very common, or a lot of unawares, so keep that in mind. One other thing for, for the time of discussion, don't need answers now, but as staff at large, we just, the staff here. You guys know, there's a lot of pressure to put entitlements through as quickly as possible, as rapidly as possible. We recently had a certain plan that came before planning commission, fifteen conditions had gone on. And if you read into it, a couple of those conditions were like five or six hundred conditions, so maybe we can actually put the conditions to the part of that. Again, understanding there's a lot of pressure to move entitlements through as quickly as possible. My experience administering it is when we get a lot of conditions, it gets. Very difficult for staff now and in future to figure out what the hell happened and what was supposed to happen. And what did they mean by this, because it was never really corrected and touched. By working communities as small as Marion Township, where they say if something changes that the planning commission wants a site plan. Planning commission has to see it before it goes to the township board. We want to make sure you did that edition. I've also worked in communities where the rule of thumb is that if there are more than five conditions, you don't get on the agenda. Or you have to fix the one before you get on the agenda. In order to get to that point, there, there needs to be a lot of finance support for doing that, just developing a community, pushing, fighting, big screen and do all those things. So when you get time and staffing computer to this too. We ought to figure out what our comfort level is there. Are we okay with twenty, thirty conditions with, I want approvals for, do we want it five or ten?
Yeah, I think that's a good question, I think that's one, something that I discuss also with the vice chair, but just, I think in some ways. To make it clear for planning commission expectations as well as staff, I think to make it easier on staff so that they're not, if planning commission has some direction on certain issues like that. When a planning petition should be before us, I, I think that helps everybody in the long run, so I, I think that's good feedback, so.
Define entitlement, I'm not.
Yeah, basically a site plan approval or something, or a zoning approval.
A condition to it or a missed item that's gonna be corrected?
Yeah, well, sometimes there'll be conditions, basically, if we see a site plan that this.
Doesn't have a light pole on it, needs a light pole?
For follow-up issues.
That example.
Yes.
Site plan comes in and it's missing a light pole, maybe it's missing two. Planning commission can recommend approval to council, subject to applicant providing a revised plan that shows that. For something that's that minor, staff will take it to city council instead of having the plan revised right away. And then council can make that same condition. What we have that, that a lot of communities don't have, and I understand Zach's point, is they don't have a mechanism for. How do you ensure that that plan is revised to meet those conditions? In Dexter, when planning commission makes a recommendation, council approves it. Uh makes a recommendation, council approves it. If a revised, if an applicant is expected to provide a revised plan to demonstrate, that's how, that's part of the motion. So a condition of approval. In the example of your light poles is. Applicant provides a revised plan that shows. Whatever that light pole is. On a revised site plan. And then it comes into staff. To see that revised site plan and review it, make sure that it has in fact been corrected, then it gets stamped approved. Then we get to move to the next phase, which is zoning compliance in order to get a building permit. We have a built-in system to ensure things are correct.
Same applies for like landscape ones and stuff.
Yeah, 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 we we, so yeah, the conditions vary quite a bit. Oh, yeah, dumpster, something like that.
Move dumpsters a lot.
I mean, it does put out, it puts the pressure or the onus on staff then to make sure that those issues are addressed. Each before it goes to council. So again, that's sometimes where I've had some interest in maybe making sure some of those are. Done before they even get to us so that it it's less work on staff. And then the pressure, I I get, I mean, I'm. As most people probably know, I'm on the flip side in the city of Ann Arbor, so I get, I understand the pressure that people get. Oh, put this on the agenda, but and then if planning commission has maybe some direction that to control that, that helps staff at the end of the day, but I still think some conditions are very reasonable. I mean, like we, like a light pole example or landscaping, that's that's not that uncommon, but but there's no uh. Yeah, there's no distinct line about what condition. What what a condition can be, basically.
And. The staff recommendation would take into any consideration. Uh a conflict between the entitlements projected into the plan. Where, you know, dumpster is gonna get moved from this side of the building and then you're gonna look at the plan and you say, oh, they're gonna put a light pole there.
Oh, right, right. Yeah, typically, they're not huge, does that, like, it's not something that would result in a change to another part of the plan. So again, it might just be, oh, there's a space there, you forgot to add that light, we'll add it there. But if it's like, well, the dumpster is going there, but you've got a tree there, figure that out later. Typically, it's not stuff like that, because that could be a design issue that could. Then we may want to see that issue back, because if it's triggering a, moving a dumpsters, you know, can be significant depending on the type of project it is. So yeah, so there's. There's not a, like I said, there's not really a distinct cutoff of what a condition is, but I think so far, most of them. You know, usually are are pretty reasonable, and I feel they've all all been addressed, so. I don't think it's been necessarily an issue, but but again, I think in in interest of efficiency, it's sometimes better to talk through those things and maybe get that list whittled down a little bit more.
And so if I'm not saying there's any concern, I see when folks visit or. If there's a lot of conditions, it places a lot of more burden on staff. Because there have been revisions, you may not see those plans in the earliest for a month. At the latest twelve to eighteen months. And now you have to go figure out what were all these additions, what were they actually talking about, have to watch video over and over. Uh. There can also be a lot of pressure and burden of staff, like, well, it's just a couple of light poles, people start doing it for that now, we'll. Our energy is busy for the next three months. Give us the things we can start building. Um so I'm not saying it's been an issue, but it's a way to at least burden on staff and make sure the things are needed a lot.
Mostly do you work with? With building authorities? Uh is Dexterous Washington County?
We use Washington.
Yeah, we building.
Washington County does not issue any building permit from a mechanical, electrical. Unless they've got zoning compliance. There are a few types of situations where zoning compliance isn't needed. Um for like replacement windows, if you're. Replacing the same size window. You don't need a permit from me. If you're reshingling the roof, you don't need zoning compliance from me. Um a, an detached accessory structure of less than a hundred square feet. Doesn't need a zoning compliance permit or a building permit. So um we have that, we have a really good line of communication and they don't approve things that. That we don't have zoning compliance for. Or have not issued zoning complacency.
But when applicants, when applicants come to you, you go through those things and say, hey, these are gonna be issues. Could you bring those to the attention of the planning?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, and you do everything you can to minimize those before.
Yes, we actually did that today.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was supposed to be a a development uh on planning commissions with the agenda. And after going through all the consultant reviews and then my own review, it's like. It's better to, I get, I try to give them options.
True.
I can take this, the planning, I'm going to ask them to postpone it. And the letter's not gonna be very positive.
Mm-hmm.
Or you can request postpone then. Let's get, let's sit down and meet, figure everything out. And then you can come back with a revised plan. And I think that when you're probably people that way. It's a. Get a better. Help.
Right, and I mean, the other thing to remember is every project is unique, right? Every project has different constraints from timing or zoning or, I mean.
Even the personalities that bring them.
Exactly, exactly.
And and when the senior center came in. That had an extreme time constraint, because the time was to patch the money and. That in the last planning commission mean you voted no one.
And.
I mean, there were, there were things that sometimes planning commission or members of planning commission say, no, I don't agree with that. But those things do get worked out. I mean, and it does, it does place more notice on the administration to take care of those. But the administration knows about them beforehand. It's not like it's a practice.
Yeah.
But I'm not perfect, I do miss things sometimes.
Anything else for planning commission, any other?
Well, I'm not sharing my own number, only while I'm actually. I I hopefully this isn't a hotbed issue. I I truly don't know if it is or not, but uh who's the authority on ADUs?
On ADUs? Uh well, Michelle, basically, I mean, we we allowed them in the code. I mean, it was through planning, but but ultimately, they just need a zoning uh permit.
Okay.
So.
Are you going to an ADU?
No, that's just. Well, that that was, that was another thing that we were, that planning commit, I mean, I don't know how long ago was the ADU ordinance now.
I think that was. It's been at least two years, maybe three now.
Yeah, that's been a while.
We were ahead of the curve on ADUs, short-term rentals, vacation.
Oh, yeah, for short-term rentals, that's been. I I that's been an issue. So something like the ADU ordinance, again, that was meant to helping. You know, increase density, make it slightly more affordable, maybe for people, that's another issue that we all haven't. Uh talked about here necessarily is, you know, affordability, which we have very limited tools to do anything with or to do anything about, so.
And so so the people know ADU stands for accessory dwelling.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah, accessory dwelling unit, I'm sorry, yeah, we.
So.
We both, so basically, like the smaller, they used to call them what, uh mother-in-law suites or whatever else.
Mother-in-law suites.
Basically, so.
A lot of change within the primary dwelling.
Or 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 accessory. Or it can be an accessory. Over a garage, Paul Cousins had one, basically, yeah, I think that was illegal, I would say before.
Yeah.
That was before the code, but anyway.
Catherine's got one that's.
Perfect. Okay, so those are great tools. I mean. Again, looking for the affordability to allow people to maybe stay in their house or, you know, uh. Allow other people to move into our community, yeah, maybe can't support the or uh for the whole house now, maybe we can get an ADU. It's gonna be a slow, it's not cheap to do an ADU. It can, it's not cheap at all for anybody that's done one, but I mean, it's so it's not like it's necessarily super, super cheap to do, but it, but it's another means of of adding some housing in the city.
Ann Arbor has.
Ann Arbor has it, yeah, yeah, and even that. Uh no, all over the city now.
The city.
And e- even in Ann Arbor, it's. It's done fairly well, but there haven't really been any issues with it at all in the, in Ann Arbor, and I don't think we've really had, I mean, obviously, it's a much different. Pressures there, but I think in in Dexter here, we're gonna have more pressure with our recreation opportunities and things along. Along those lines, so. Yeah, that's great. I'm glad that you guys have an ADU. Ah that that is really exciting, so can't think of any other exciting, other other thing for planning projects, um. You know, I think in general, uh while we all encounter this as members of a board or commission, basically, but. Uh it was identified at one of our other meetings, how frustrating sometimes things. Uh getting the message through to the public can be, I think, that um. You know, particularly, I think, planning commission and council, maybe, because obviously, we deal with with the petitions that, you know, can rile a lot of people up and. I think it it's great. I I think as a board, we've done really good and and as a council, trying to be respectful of everybody's different opinions and and trying to be. Uh not not to be dismissive, even though like, again, I I understand some of the concerns. That aren't necessarily based in reality, so it's it's frustrating it sometimes because. I think I I wanna just, like, I tell everybody I know, all my neighbors is. We can count on all you guys to do whatever you see like a site plan there, you know, we can learn something about it and talk to your neighbors and if they have questions, have them talk to staff. Throw it out on Michelle, but but basically, because it's, I find just talking to my neighbors that it it's, it's amazing how many people have no idea what goes on in their community. And we just, e- except for when something comes up in in the social media, which. It is not based in reality at all, so we, I wanna get the message out there. Before people get too far down one path that they can't really see the the compromise, so. Um I think it's something that I always wanna do is to kind of spread the good word, or what's something we've done since we've, uh well, all boards have done since we last got together is the student reps. I think was a great idea that um getting some student interest in there because on on our different boards and commissions, I think they're on every one of our boards, right? Yeah, so that's good. So I think, again, that that spreads the word out to the community a little bit to get more and more people interested in it. And so that we know about all our activities, not just the controversial. Um but yeah.
And 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 to plug that further, if anybody knows any students who are interested, now now it's time to have them submit applications. Um our our application season for student reps has been slow. So uh we'll pull plenty of opportunities.
Yeah.
I would say the community over northern suburban Detroit ones. And there was this. Billboard type thing, you know, wedge type thing, you know, people put in front of their businesses.
Sandwich boards.
Sandwich boards, thank you. And it said zoning meeting on Thursday to discuss. Change to this sites, something.
Yeah, nobody puts a big site, uh Ann Arbor, we do a little, uh they're smaller signs, basically, um but on. We post those on sites too as well in advance, like a week in advance, but nobody does that as well. They post large signs.
Mm-hmm, yeah, because, you know, I'm as a property owner, I get notified that. You know, uh. So-and-so is gonna change his zoning here, he's gonna put an addition on all this stuff. I appeared at the ZBA many years ago, but it issued. But. If. You're out walking around as we do. I'd like to see, oh. That's thirty forty-five and they're gonna get this, or that's thirty-eight eighty and that's gonna get this. So. Is that a possibility that we could go that route? I don't know if it's more asshole. I don't know pace for it.
I mean, it could be either the staff.
It's an, it's so in communities that I've worked in before. It isn't, it's a required. In the ordinance. And so it it's an applicant's responsibility. Um.
Yeah, we could.
Happy to bring that to the planning commission and also the council. That's what they wanna do. Um.
It I mean, it's been something I I've kind of thought about for a while, but yeah, you can write it right into the code that the applicant with their application has to post, you know, ten days a week before, whatever it is. It doesn't have to be a large sign, it can just be like a, we do it, like I said, eleven by seventeen, pretty much either on a stake or a telephone pole. Out out in front of the site that just says, nope, you know, public hearing on this date, so-and-so, contact. Um, you know, staff for more information. Yeah, cuz I mean, maybe that, yeah, maybe it's time to revisit that idea as well to get more people as they're walking by a site.
Yeah.
And noticing, particularly the higher profile sites like the, you know, I mean, it's all our site, I mean, nothing's easy in the city anymore, so because of every site's gonna have its issues, it's not like we have a big open field that we're gonna develop, so. Um, yeah, everything's kind of tricky in some ways, so. Well, that's true, and that's all another issue which we didn't talk about, but that's another thing for the future.
You're really going off the deep.
I'm not, I touched the Dexter Chelsea Road, but I'm not gonna touch the other big annexation.
I think the the key to your question is not whether it's a good idea or whether it would help. Bring awareness, it's who's responsible on staff for that, and what they're suggesting is that. You put, you can, you put that burden on the applicant if it's something we want to see, so that they're required to do it. As opposed to Michelle or Grace before her, you know.
Yeah.
That's right.
If the mechanism though, you put.
Should be very simple.
Should be.
It's not expensive. I mean, it's, again, it's a good tool for the developer. Well, they they consider it a good tool, but I.
Depends on what's at hand.
Right, right, yeah, it'd be good for us, I think, as all of our. As a board member or commission member, I think it'd be good for us to try and get more people out there, and it's pretty cheap, so it's not like it's gonna cost a developer time or money. Yeah, I think most people are generally interested because when they hear something through a neighbor on social media, they get all fired up, so maybe there's a way to kind of get to that point beforehand. And direct them to the the actual facts or, you know, the the petitions and things like that.
That's, that, yeah, that's goes back to the facts, because there's so many times. Where I'm, I get frustrated and like, like Matt said, I mean, you can't be dismissive and it is good to hear feedback from people, but. The big one for me is we cannot tell private property owners what to do. If they're complying with the code, we can't tell them what to do, so. Anyway.
Hmm.
They have to follow the requirements of the ordinance. Right, but for example, with the pillow, people came in and were like, we wanna park, oh, okay, I can't help with that, you know. I wish I could, but I can't.
So I think the last board we've got on our. List here is the ZBA or zoning Board of Appeals. Um.
What's going on there?
Catherine, I think you are our lone representative outside of maybe.
Lisa.
Lisa, oh, yeah, Lisa. That's an army good home. How much activity have we had?
None, but they're going to have one.
They're gonna have.
Hmm. They're going to have one on May twentieth.
Okay. And what is that?
Yes, he. I share cat grins.
Yeah, right.
Catherine, one time.
Top secret.
Am I allowed to tell?
Yeah, it's.
I'm really staring at me.
That's okay, I can, I can do it if you'd rather.
Yeah, I know.
It's the seniors.
Yeah, yeah.
They've applied for a variance.
I've been, yeah, um it has to do with what faces the road and what doesn't.
So the board will look at it. Against the criteria that they have to. Um. If, if um if they are successful in obtaining the variance, then they'll submit. Plans that. Um that don't have a door. If they are not successful, um then they submit plans that do have a door. Um I've heard, I've heard a few comments about how they'll go back to city council and council will. Quote-unquote fix it. Um, uh if you do, if you're not successful at ZBA, the recourse is circuit court. You can't go back to city council. Oh. I think council all knows that, but I think out in the public. There's that misconception.
So the building they wanna build on the out.
Mm-hmm.
They want it to face the parking area as opposed to the street.
They want the primary entrance to be on the parking area side. And our ordinance suggests that it should face the street.
No, what about pharmacies construction? On the side.
What is pharmacies? Pharmacy is a front door.
Phil, there's, there's many, there's many examples of doors that are on side.
Yeah.
Throughout the community. But we, I mean, we we just put this change in place. Not that long ago.
A year ago.
A year ago.
That's.
Yeah, they have.
Right, you, but you had a different zoning ordinance at the time. Um.
But that still would comply, though.
Right, it it, yes.
But that's true, that wasn't, like, in Brower's building that he built, that has a bill, entrance that's technically on the side. I mean, it's right at the front, so Brower, the old Katy, your Katie's or the alley, whatever it was. Yeah, basically, that's on the side, but it's at the very front, but it's on the side, so.
Last panel.
Yeah, exactly, so.
That was also before the code change.
Yes, yeah, yeah, no, absolutely, right.
So that'll be made from, yeah, and um.
That's good, so you got that scheduled, then?
Yeah, it's.
ZBA will be earning their pay, that's great.
So that's the end of our little list, um.
Did you? It only meets once a year. The selection committee. Art selection committee. And there's a lot of members that cross over. I. Don't know if that was an oversight or if that was intent because of the old crossover, I mean, there's a DDA member. ACH, a bunch of us from ACH are on it. I don't know who is excluded by. Not operating.
You mean the chance to come to the meeting?
Yeah.
I guess I didn't, didn't think about it.
That was.
Yeah, I mean, I I I think, I think, I think everyone who is on the art selection committee is on another border care commission, so.
Uh everyone from our selection is invited to. To come.
Yes, I sort of was hoping.
Okay.
Good question.
But but yeah, they 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 do only meet once a year and their only. Uh item of business is the. Selection of art based on the recommendation from Arts Culture Heritage Committee. So.
So from the council's end, um. I want everybody to know that we uh. We have, we're planning to invest significantly in our infrastructure again this year. Um Baker Road is slated to be under construction beginning as soon as school gets out, basically, right?
Yeah, so we're we're talking with with the uh contractor to see if we can push it to uh after the bicentennial.
I guess the late June then.
But yeah, late 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 June or early July, um that uh Forest Street. A few streets in here on Farms, um there's a.
The industrial park?
Industrial Park and West Ridge are are being uh steel coated or or sealed, um. And then uh city council did did adopt uh the the three-year roads plan. Um end of twenty twenty-three, uh so implementing twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. Um road construction years. Um Baker Road is gonna be challenging, um just because of the post office primarily. Um so we'll we'll be meeting with contractor to see. How we can make sure that service and and access to the post office are are maintained through through construction.
It will not.
Yeah, I don't I don't believe so.
There's gonna be about a three or four week period where it could be very hairy.
Um limited, um so uh the primary primary purpose is uh the resurfacing. Um but there is the addition of a marked crossing at Forest Street. Um addition of a couple, I think, at least one, if not more, um parking spaces um on Baker Road. Um and then changing the lane widths uh slightly.
Think if I if I can just interject to the Baker Road thing, I think that um. That's a uh, sorry, I know you're gonna say something, but um that that's a really touchy. Subject for me, I think, because Baker Road, if we if you look at that as far as our corridors to the city, that is so neglected. And from a pedestrian point of view, it's absolutely horrible. It is by far the worst street. And I've been saying stuff about this every year, so to get this as a pedestrian study. It it it's so bad, one the cross, I I appreciate the addition of one crosswalk, but. I I really hope that they're also reducing the the intersection widths. If you look at those intersections between Grand, the one at Grand, the one on Forest, and I said this repeatedly, they're they're a hundred and something feet wide. And they're speed ramps, so everybody that there's like speed, they they cut that corner and they zip down Forest and they don't stop. And I've got three close calls in twenty years where I've I've. So that doesn't seem like a lot, three, but that's where I literally jumped out of the way to avoid getting hit, so I. I think if we're not redoing those intersections, that's a tremendous lost opportunity because we get so much pedestrian traffic along. Baker and the the sidewalks, um particularly on the west side, are they're two feet from that street. And they're they're all erratic, they're up and down and they're, yeah, if you have a wheelchair or a stroller, which I pushed for years, it's horrible. And no, this, we've gotta reduce the intersection widths. The intersections are a hundred feet wide for what should be. Uh like just regular, you know, they're they're side streets, because it encourages people to speed very quickly. Because you don't have to turn or slow down, you zip, and the stop signs are also placed next to the street, not in front of the site, not. Not by the stop bar in front of the sidewalk, so nobody stopped at the sidewalk, they zip through. So I've asked this before, but if I can in in council, we've gotta look at those intersections. It's extremely dangerous, and now we're drawing more and more people to that trailhead across Grand. And even though we've got that hawk crossing there, that the activated one, that again, if you look at the pedestrian where it's set up. Yeah, the rapid flashing beacon is because it it it's on the opposite side of where the sidewalk on that side of Grand is, so nobody takes it, they just cut across. Because you'd have to backtrack, so there's. I just, I encourage you, we have to, cuz once we redo this street, it's gonna be set in gold for another twenty years. And it's really dangerous and it's horrible pedestrian experience, and I'm glad that at at least from a a non-motorized and. And um disability sake, it's it's really gotta be looked at. What the distance, the slopes.
So the li- the limits of this are from Maine and Maine to Grand.
To Grand, right, right.
So so anything south of there is not part of what this.
Right, it's not the worst. The worst part really is Grand leading to downtown. Those are the worst, those intersections. I I anyone who go out there and look at the intersections at Forest and Grand and look at how wide you have to cross for us for a residential street. Cuz they're angled, so nobody stops, they zip down. Sorry, that's my that's my tangent, but it's a really sore spot on me because I've been bringing it up for years that we've gotta look at, and and as the developments have come online, like the pharmacy. Brower's building, we've been slowly moving that sidewalk a little bit away from the street, which is good, I think, but the west side is is really bad, and I know there's only so much we can do with the right of way. But really, I impo- the the crosswalks at Forest and Grand and the street width have gotta be looked at. They're really dangerous. All right, rant done. Sorry. Yes, you had a point or a question.
Uh it it's not currently on the plan. The 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 challenge with Broad Street is that it is gonna require a full reconstruction. And that's the most expensive um treatment that you can do, so the trade-off is Broad Street versus. A ton of other streets and we're working that in somewhere, um Broad Street is a major road. And so we already, we we have the potential to be able to apply for a federal transportation improvement plan uh funding for it. Uh but we only get that once every two to three years, um and it has to meet certain requirements as far as like truck traffic and. Um uh traffic flow. And so it's, you know, Broad Street, Baker, Central, Ann Arbor. Um not not Danboy, um so kind of all of those streets are competing for kind of the same pot of of federal dollars. But. Yeah, and 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 so and we 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 did just complete Third and Broad and um that that was an expensive project. Um and so, I mean, it 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 will take time to tackle each um. Um leg of of Broad.
But Justin, we did have federal funds for that, correct?
We did.
Yeah, and like Justin said, every three years or so, we get federal funds that can be applied to the major streets. We chose to do Baker, the next likely one is Broad at some point.
Help me out again, it's between Main Street and Grand.
On Baker, or Baker, yeah.
Yeah, that stretch, yep. If you recall.
Yeah.
From the roundabouts up to Grand was resurfaced back when the roundabouts were done. We timed to fed our federal dollars at the same time the roundabouts were done to do the part in front of the schools up to Grand, and then this is now. The continuation of that here in twenty twenty-four.
Ranch needs to be something else.
And I don't think there are, I don't think there are the geometric improvements that you're asking for.
Yeah, I don't I don't think so, there there wasn't in the plan I saw, but.
For 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 the most part, the the curb line is remaining where it is.
There there are some, I think, I think there are some ADA spots that are being added.
Parking spaces.
Spaces, right? Um.
And and the the yeah, the parking in front of the post office is being reconfigured to 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 make that more accessible.
Awesome, I had a rant about in front of the post office. Coming around as you come off of Main on the Baker. I live there, so I uh I get to see it every day and hear it every day. Get the screeches and uh the mucklers every day, but um but they come around the corner and it's just like, they just stand on it. And, you know, going by and the post office, yeah, it is a race track, and then, um, you know. Yeah, kind of thing in front of the post office, but it just seems like it's um, it's just like a broader way to have.
I think even reducing those streets, the intersection widths, that doesn't seem, I mean, that's just. It's, they're so wide, go out there tomorrow and walk across it, it's a hundred feet wide, it's like as wide as. The intersection, actually, I I measured it, the one at at Grand is as wide as the intersection at Baker and and Main Street, if you measure it from the GIS map, it's that wide. I mean, that that's in so that nobody needs to slow down.
Well, there is a crosswalk going in there, I can tell you that. At at Forest.
One just passed Grand at Forest.
At Forest, there's, and it's gonna be on an angle, don't get me started.
Oh, I was gonna say, I thought those aren't.
It's still, there's gonna be one there that's gonna take a little getting used to.
Question, I put that nicely. It's near and dear to arts culture and heritage, and that is the the utilization of a pad. On the Grand View site.
For art?
Yeah, it it appears from the conversation we had a couple months ago that it's not in a good spot because of overhanging trees and all that. Stuff that's in that area. I don't know if we can change the location because of underground, I mean, a lot of stuff going through there. But that's one of the sites on our proposed list for utilization.
Yeah.
It's, we're waiting for it to be done with.
Yeah.
Yeah, Grammy Commons did include in their PUD um the inclusion of a of a concrete pad um for the placement of art.
And they've got it on the drawings, I can't remember where it is.
So one of the things we we did talk about is that the location of it makes it difficult to actually put. Um public art there also, the base of it, um whether they have put is not um up to our standard, so. At Arts and Culture Committee, we discussed that potentially when um a development is coming in and. Um we are asking for that to be put in place within their plans to have some. Input from Arts and Culture Committee to where in that parcel would be helpful for having it. Or um and also potentially have a set of the standards for what do we wanna see as the concrete pad to hold the sculpture.
I I if I recall correctly, when we did this in twenty nineteen, um the topic of discussion was not. Recommending a a blank concrete pad as part of PUD developments, but requiring that the actual art piece be included.
Well, my comment, Phil, would be, or however, if it doesn't fit right out there at the corner, maybe they have an interior open space area. It could be interior to the development. Now, some might say that that's seen more by the people that live just there, but.
Yeah, I encourage it to be more close closer to the road.
To the corner.
And you you mentioned Pelham, I I'm assuming that's on the par side across the fire station. Is there any uh foot, anything a foot to include art there?
I don't think so.
No.
No, there's not.
No, no.
Um.
We asked them to add a plaque, a larger plaque, which is kind of a, you know, historical recognizing Frederick Pelham, but I. But so that's that's kind of.
No, they they looked at, they looked at what was proposed as recognizable material benefits over and above a site point. Um and the big one being the pre-bank stabilization um held a lot of weight to it. And so um they did not request an art pad because it wouldn't have been on the interior of the site. Would have been closer toward the main street. There's not a lot of room there, so.
Just wanna know that it was thought.
Well, we do have the deposit, we do have the deposit, yeah, they lost on team too, right?
If there's still money for that one.
I don't know how we're choosing that or what.
We talked about that.
I think that it, I think the fund is five thousand dollars, which doesn't go in on like for art as an understatement.
Yeah, they the um the the conversation was uh to keep doing the temporary display until we found something that was appropriate.
And that's a tough spot because it has to be a certain size to be noticeable, and if it's a certain size, it costs a lot more than five thousand dollars.
Is that what the money is, five grand?
Well, I couldn't remember.
Cuz, yeah, basically, I mean, I looked at the, this a couple years ago in the. And the bids that we had for art to select, something of that magnitude was in the area, what, fifty, sixty thousand dollars?
At least twenty-five or more, but. And that's only getting more expensive, but that money is actually earning interest now, correct? I think Marie said it was.
I I believe so, but but you you could also use the um the revenue generated by paint extra too. It's just there.
Yeah, and we've talked about, I I used to be the chair of ACH, just FYI, what, that's why I'm talking so much about this.
Well, um quarter to nine, have we covered everything, or is there, do we have general questions on anything, topics that we didn't touch on?
I mean, my seat is Zach's seat and Jamie's seat.
Any people running for council? Okay.
Do we want a motion to adjourn?
Well, I was, I have I have to finish the agenda. Is there any non-arranged participation? Seeing none, we will adjourn the meeting at quarter to nine.
And you.
Thanks for coming, everybody.
Yes, thank you. Always, always nice to get together as a group.